Are we in? All right, we'll call the meeting to order here. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make. I'll make motion to approve the agenda minutes is received. Fireworks permit and we have no liquor license.
Good motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I just, just a notation, the fireworks permit is at three, four, two, five, four Lambert Avenue. And it's on August twenty second. And if that is a bad, weather is bad, they have a backup day of August twenty third.
Somebody's birthday. It's probably for mine, I'm guessing.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Turning that all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. New visitors, supervisor updates, I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
And none here.
Larry Hurst and Julie Lines. You guys are up to bat.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
You had a good week, didn't you?
Okay, I'll give you a couple of updates. Larry just passed out the press release.
My COVID file is gonna be thicker than any other file.
Right.
In the seven years I've been here.
Correct. Um, in the last seven days, we've had nine new cases, with a total of ninety-seven cases. Uh, I think last week I reported to you that we had nine cases.
Yeah.
So, we're staying, holding steady there.
Now, those, quick question, the nine cases, is that new cases?
New cases.
Okay, cuz I had a buddy that had it and he was tested like five times in a week, so.
Yes, so those are new cases.
Okay.
And we have a total of ninety-seven cases in Mills County. Three of those individuals are in the age range of nineteen to forty, three are in the age range of forty-one to sixty, and three were in the age range of sixty-one to eighty. So you can see, we have kind of a, an even spread of age ranges. Um, of all nine cases, they were reported to have contracted COVID due to, uh, community spread. A total of, uh, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two individuals have been tested. And for the last fourteen rolling days, we've had a six-point-one positivity rate. We have had one death in Mills County and we've had fifty-nine individuals recover. Um, so that's the press release that we will be sending out today for your review.
On the death is, was there any underlying conditions or is it, is that something you can say or not, or?
Not serious underlying health condition.
Okay.
Yes, there were some mild.
Okay. Just a question.
I see we changed our age range now too. Didn't we, the night, was it, wasn't it, was it always zero to eighteen?
Zero to eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking, okay.
Yep. Okay. Uh, I had just a couple of other, um, guidance issues that I wanted to review with you. Um, public health has very specific guidance on gatherings and large events. And you know, we are transitioning back to the fall season. And in our county in particular, we tend to have some rather large events that happen in the fall. Um, we've had some of our community partners reach out to us. For example, the Chamber trying to figure out Oktoberfest. I know that the city is meeting next week to, to discuss homecoming and how those events might look. We continue to offer the recommendation that large events and mass gatherings in Mills County are discouraged. They just are until the threat of COVID nineteen has come under better control. Um, we are particularly, um, pushing the guidance that when we have attendees traveling from outside our local area, that's a particular concern. Right, so whenever you have a gathering where you'd have people coming from other, other counties, other states, you're just mixing a pool of potential, um, infection. And so we want to try to discourage that. If we do have large events and mass gatherings, um, it's better if primary attendance is for the local area. And then for those protective measures, we need to be very vigilant that we've been stressing all along. So, um, stay home if you're ill. Uh, we need to maintain physical distance, wear a face mask, have hand sanitizer on hand. So, these are just some issues to, um, keep in mind as we transition into the fall. We're gonna have, um, sporting events, homecoming, other gatherings. And those are a point of concern right now for public health. I think a couple of weeks ago, I'm switching into number three, which is this enforcement of social distancing requirements for food and alcohol businesses. I don't know, Larry, if it was last week or the week before, we talked about, on the last page of your packet, there is a page from the Department of Inspections and Appeals. And it's talking about how do we strengthen enforcement for those who gather at, um, restaurants or bars? Um, over time, we are kind of seeing that that is a, a place where infection is likely to spread. And so they have this progressive discipline set up for those establishments if they don't abide by the public health protocol. And recently, the Alcohol Beverages Division of the State of Iowa, along with the, um, Department of Inspection and Appeals, they have set up a website where as a citizen, you can, um, report violations. And the violations are consistent with both bars and food establishments. So, um, you can go online as a citizen and remain anonymous and report the violation that you, um, witnessed. Um, and then they are encouraging you to upload a supporting video or photo and that those will take priority. And that basically, the Department of Inspections and Appeals and the Alcohol Division, they're gonna work really hard with businesses to make sure that they enforce those policies of, primarily, they're looking for those businesses to, um, maintain physical distance and not have large crowds congregating. Um, they are very clear in their guidance that they are not interested in, in reports of, um, customers or staff using face masks. That they're not, that's not a reportable incident for them. They are looking for the six feet of distance, available seats, no big congregating, and that those, um, hygiene measures are in place. So that's, that's a good thing that they're offering so that we can try to get a better handle on that. Um, as far as long-term care updates, so Glen Haven, Linwood, On With Live, the GRC, and Nishna Productions are all reporting that they are on phase two across the board. This allows them to have restricted visitation with a family member and some other limited contacts, such as being able to see a beautician, which is a big deal.
Maybe you can get my hair done.
Well, it, it gets there. So, all long-term care facilities report a strong desire, they all wanna move on to this phase three as soon as possible. But that would require our fourteen-day positivity rate to trend downwards. And we are just not there yet. Um, I wanted to read this one paragraph to you because I just wanna make sure that this stays on our radar as a community and with our business partners. While public health mitigation efforts remain critically important, especially in long-term care settings where residents may be more vulnerable to virus exposure, the state acknowledges that it is equally important to consider the quality of life and dignity of the residents of long-term care facilities. Based on recent guidance from CMS, the state has collaborated with long-term care associations on how to responsibly ease restrictions in long-term care facilities while COVID nineteen remains in communities across the state. This guidance is based on currently available best practice recommendations and evidence, and may be updated and adjusted as additional information becomes available and response efforts evolve. I think the long-term care facilities in our county and our state and across the nation have really been under some very tight restrictions since COVID nineteen, um, started back in March. We've seen over time, I'm sure if you watch the news, that long-term care outbreaks tend to be particularly catastrophic because of the medically fragile population that's there. And once there's an outbreak, it tends to have, um, some very poor outcomes. And so they've been under really strict, um, limitations for a long time. Now, we're six-plus months into this and we have to figure, um, putting into the equation quality of life for those people and, and figuring out how to balance that. So, if you track it over time, you will see that some of their restrictions have been eased since early on, even though conditions might not be markedly better. There's a way to, to allow contact with family, particularly if it's limited, if it's one person, if it's outdoors, if they put some of those mitigation things into play, then those, we, we do need to be concerned about. We need to care about the quality of life for our long-term care residents. So, that's just something that we will be working on, ongoing. Uh, the only other item that I had, and I, I think I saw it on your agenda, so maybe I don't need to spend any time on it, is the Corona Relief Fund for local governments. We talked about that just briefly last time. And, um, we had discussion around needing a resolution, covered and uncovered costs and timeline to submit. We had talked about payroll for public health and public safety employees. As a matter of administrative convenience, local governments may presume, which is language to say that it could just be deemed that twenty-five percent of our payroll costs for the first five months of the public health emergency could be recouped through this. There is some fine details that need to be sorted out. I have a couple of employees who are paid for, their salaries paid for by a federal grant. And so if their salaries were completely covered by the federal grant, for instance, my grant coordinators who do public health emergency preparedness, it's, it's completely paid for by that grant. So I don't know if they can be excluded or if they'd have to be, if they could be included. So, there's a few unknowns about whether or not we can include them, but I'm sure that information will come to light and we'll figure it out.
Does this exempt out, in the fact that if the, just the regular salary that was already budgeted? I mean, does it exempt that or does this go for the overtime only?
No, so the reading of this, at the level of information that we have right now is, they use a couple of words that are of particular interest because you were thinking of FEMA. And for FEMA, that's very much the case. If you have regular employees and they're on the regular clock, their costs are not reimbursable, but overtime is. This is an odd caveat that was written in, and I think it's because the state recognizes that local public health have had to markedly shift their focus. I think a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago, feels like a couple of years ago. A couple of weeks ago, I brought to your attention that we had grant funding and that we were fully funded, but that we're not able to execute those grants because our work with COVID nineteen has pulled my staff off their regular assigned duties to meet this public health emergency. Long story short, this is an odd caveat that I think is, is meant to help cover local public health and, and public safeties payroll costs because we are doing things like administrative convenience and deeming, we're just, we're just assuming that twenty-five percent of your payroll cost at minimum would be directed towards this public health emergency. Now, when we actually go to fill out the grant, when we get on the portal, there's probably gonna be very specific questions. Larry always goes online and he has contact and he can sort of sift through what, what may or may not be included. And, and the fine details may look different than what we think at this point, but we'll see how it pans out.
And that's coming up soon.
The deadline for that is September fifteenth, and my suggestion would be you don't wanna wait anywhere near that. So, my suggest, well, first of all, the portal isn't open yet, is it?
Yeah, I haven't checked it today.
But as of.
Supposedly, there's supposed to be direction on how to use it this week.
They're gonna put YouTube out and stuff like that.
So, it'll be coming up pretty quick, but it's a five-month period ending July thirty-first. And then there'll be another time period for July and August that has to be, July, August and September.
August and September.
August and September, and it's due October first.
Did they, did they put that one out too?
I guess it's September and it's.
Yeah.
Well, it said October first, but that can't be correct.
No, I thought they.
You had to push that out.
I thought they extended that one out too.
They'd have to.
I guess I was interpreting, I was interpreting it, if it was already in your scheduled budget, unless it was overtime or you hired extra people, that you couldn't do the payroll thing. I guess that's, that's where I was reading it.
Uh.
You'll find out.
We will, we will certainly find out. Um, here's the, the original document. And it does say, um, expenses occurred October through September need to be submitted by October first.
Wow.
And that can't be correct. They can't, they can't need that, quick of a turnaround. So, we'll get into the weeds of it.
It has to be closed out by end of December.
And figure it out. Any questions?
Do that here for your time.
Sure.
So, school starts Thursday?
School does start Thursday. Um, we are working really closely with the school district, particularly, um, the superintendent and the nurses as far as what contact tracing is gonna look like. And here's what it's gonna look like. So, um, if we have a positive case of a student or a staff, we will be notified. Then we will lean into the school and they will report to us, um, everyone who was within six feet for more than fifteen minutes. They will be considered a close contact. We will reach out to the parents. We will keep as much information protected as we can, but we would reach out to the parents and say, your student was a close contact to someone who tested positive, so here's what you have to do. And then we'll go through that isolation guidance with them and they'll be, we'll just implement it and we'll.
We're gonna start setting days out for fourteen days of a shot.
We may.
So the elementary, no masks, correct?
Well, they can, they can, starting in third grade.
Starting in third grade.
So, over at West.
Okay, they start wearing the mask all the time.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. We got notification that granddaughter would have a face shield.
What grade is she in?
She's kindergarten.
Well, good. Now, see.
The teacher did this.
Perfect. So, at public health, we talk about minimum standards. And we encourage people, if you wanna take a higher standard, we're a fan of it. So, face shields would, I can see with younger people.
Well, she, she, her, her Russell. But anyway, her feeling is that a face shield, you can, the child can see. Right, less restrictive and breathe and stuff, you know, and stuff, so.
And that's just, but see, that's only minimal because they say when you wear a face shield, you're still gonna wear a mask. I mean, that's, that's the protocol. I mean, that I mean, at least it's something for little kids. Little kids, children probably will have more coverage than adult does, but if you put an adult on a face shield, then you still need a mask. Your face shield's more or less resplendent, I think, you know, consuming medical money and stuff like that. So, the, uh, the schools did get some resources from the state arrived yesterday, gave a whole lot, uh, what they ordered, uh, which wasn't a lot, as I thought the schools were ordered. And I think, I, I always thought they'd taken advantage of it more, but, uh, and then, but the state did available on him, uh, certain items, uh, they had to cut back. So what they ordered is not what showed up. So, uh, I called the state on Friday about when I saw the list, what they were gonna ship, and questioned them on it, and they said they just didn't have it in the warehouse. So, uh, I don't know whether they're gonna come out in the second round or not, but.
So is that masks or is that sanitizer?
Some of it's masks, some of it's sanitizer, some of it is cleaning material, you know, the, uh, you know, disinfectant, stuff like that. Uh, there was some face shields, those, they were, uh, most schools ordered gloves, natural gloves, but they didn't ship them any, and I think it's because of shortage of gloves. I know that Glenwood has, their bus drivers have asked to wear gloves, nitrals, when they drive and clean. And so he can't get any, so I'm gonna try and provide and help them start out till they can get some, some resources, find a couple of sources for them to reach out to. So, uh, it's gonna be a little uncertain start for them as they get going, but I know they're working hard at it, getting prepared. There's no doubt about it. I know there's a lot of stress still in the faculty, you can feel it and you talk to some of the people. Uh, they've been, you know, back in school meeting, doing their in-services, getting prepared since last Friday, I think.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's gonna be a lot of buildup. So I think the big thing is, is start out school day with a positive note and that will basically spread to the, to the youth, hopefully, especially the little kids in the following things. So we're hoping that. There'll probably be some things we'll have to work on as they open and go forward, needs, and, uh, just go from there.
Okay, back on the, the CARES thing, um, one of the other things that is available through that is the technology as well. And so Patrick has prepared some information for you guys. I'm gonna turn it over to him for.
It's not free, Richard.
For use of some of that money as well.
Yeah, so it's also, um, you can, you can use it for technology purchases that are directly meant to respond to COVID nineteen or for reimbursement or expenditures that support telework or remote work. Um, so I've put together four initiatives that we have, outstanding projects that could potentially be used. This, this funding could be used to pay for. And I also assembled, I went back through all of our purchases back through March. And basically, those are all just laptops and, and things related to remote work that would, potentially, you could request reimbursement for, and it was up to thirty thousand dollars.
Cool.
And laptops that we've, we purchased since March for public health, Larry, uh, nine-one-one Center, Variety Department Board. There's several departments gathered here. So, the four projects that I chose, the first one was, uh, upgrading our Microsoft licenses to allow more collaboration, purchasing Microsoft Teams, uh, cloud storage, additional Microsoft Office licenses for each user to have a license, not just for their desktop, but for the mobile devices as well. Uh, the second project is to overhaul a complete redesign of the county website, uh, which drastically needs it. It would make it more mobile-friendly, basically, allow more interaction with the public. Basically, gives us just, it goes from a static website to a content management system. So each department could manage their own pages, they can keep content more current. Uh, we could interact with the public more, they subscribe to services so they know when there's changes, alerts, agendas, anything, they, they'll know immediately without having to check periodically. So, um, that was one project. The third one, oh, was the, uh, the audio/video upgrades for the boardroom. I think we briefly talked about that. Basically, replacing the screen with something that's more interactive would allow us to record the meetings a little better, upgrading, um, speakers and the cameras and, uh, the Microsoft as well. The one issue we have is just picking up the audio with this little microphone sometimes. That would probably be the lowest priority of the, the four things I would say, but if you've got the money, that's a project we've got a bid for, so. The fourth one is to upgrade the county's duress system. Our current panic alarm system, as you know, has had some issues here recently. Your button is gone. It was stolen from the treasurer's office. Um, so this, this system is seven and a half years old. It's out of maintenance, we can't get parts for it anymore. Last few times it's gone to be used, it hasn't worked the way it's supposed to. Either dispatch was only notified and the officers weren't, or vice versa. Um, last time the treasurer pushed it, they couldn't get through it all. They had someone at the counter that was unhappy about having to wear a mask. And, um, seems like there's more, a rise in tensions recently because of that, so we've had to. Anyway, it's a, it's a needed replacement anyway. But because this system that we were looking at has more capability, not just for panic and duress capabilities, but also has crisis communication, uh, we can communicate with employees. There's an app that would be on each of their desktops, on their mobile devices. They could have it on their personal computers as well, allows us to interact with dispatch, uh, any law enforcement agency. We can have people that aren't on our system be partner, there's a connect module so we can connect any agency, the school, state patrol, whoever, uh, can be connected to our system and be in our, basically in our communication. So, that one's a need regardless of whether we pursue CARES Act just because our current system is down and out right now. We basically direct the people to call nine-one-one if they need to. So, those are kind of the four projects we'd be looking at. I've got bids for all of them, so we know tentative pricing, so.
Shoots the moon.
If it came to the point where you feel like you've got money that needs to be spent, we've got some projects lined up ready to go.
When you say, we don't have a ton of mo, I mean, it's what, one, one ninety, one eighty, something?
One ninety-one, something.
So.
So what's the payroll piece you know yet? Or still?
Um, I guess the biggest thing would be if, if my federally grant-funded positions would be eliminated or included. There's not great clarity about that right now, so we'll just pull that out. And then it would be twenty-five percent, um, off the top of my head.
It was about seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand. That, that's all part.
That's your entire payroll though.
Well, and then Larry, Larry pointed out that we also, I was just, I didn't include the, we can include benefits in that. So, I have our payrolls for those months, and let me just give you one that I think is an average. So, um, let me just say that eighty thousand.
I think, comedy was just we had about two repeat them specifically. It is a federal-funded grant management, and I think those will be qualifiable. It's, it's, we've gotta be reimbursed by federal money. This CARES money, even though the state's managing it fully, it is federal dollars. It's a different color, different color, coming down to federal government. The biggest issue I think we're gonna see is, they say, anything that will qualify for public assistance under COVID nineteen, uh, they want you to use the P eight, Public Assistance Process for that. But because of the critical time we have on this thing, uh, they're gonna have to do a lot of musical chairs up the state. Luckily, the state is handling the federal COVID presidential. FEMA is gonna kinda just oversee it from the state side and not be right next cozy up to us allegedly for this event. So, the state's been given the latitude to do most of the groundwork, most of the laws, almost paperwork. So I'm thinking, whatever we submit, the state is gonna be able to look at it parallel and say, okay, this we can do CARES, this will have to be P A.
Yeah, I think they will do some sorting.
I think a lot of stuff what Patrick has, uh, some of it would be right on the borderline that we could claim for public assistance, but they may look at it as, uh, the board wants to put it with CARES, that's what the leadership wants to do, uh, let's go the CARES route. So I'm hoping that's what they do with this, so it doesn't create a nightmare, cuz we don't have time. They know we don't, the counties do not have time and the cities do not have time to play, well, can I use it for this? No, okay, can I use it for this? I recommend though, that we have other, we keep thinking of other ideas for, uh, uh, justifiable utilization of this money or monies, so we have something in our back pocket. You gotta keep moving, thinking ahead, cuz if we don't, and all of a sudden they come back to us last moment, so what else you got? You know, and then we're scrambling, so we could.
I was gonna say that the out-of-pocket money we've spent with the, the treasurer's office, the recorder's office, and all of their, uh, window, um, things that has come out of the county would probably be the FEMA portion.
I got a feeling, feeling that, that could be, end up being FEMA.
Yeah.
So, that, that's the way they could look at it. On the other hand, uh, I'm hoping the state will sit there and make those, when we put those proposals in, they will say, yes, okay, we'll go with the CARES. I, it's a hard issue because when they had, they had to come out and say that, that if it is eligible for public assistance, they want to go that route. So, cuz the governor wants to get the most used out of the money, of this other pot of money is what she wants to do. And I understand that. It's just, it's a very short time window to do this.
So, do we put the full amount in the resolution?
No, this, the thing is, this resolution, Friday night, the state called me back, cuz, cuz Carol, the auditor had mentioned to me Friday, and we got in information from our affiliate support that, uh, every time you did this, it was gonna be different this time, you're gonna have to pass a resolution. They ended up getting a hold of me Friday night and said that, uh, Larry, I know this is odd, but in order for us to know that the elected officials, whether it be the county board or the city of X, Y, Z, uh, we want to know in writing by some sort of formal action that they approved these proposals each time, those two windows. And I said, well, you've never done that before and the federal government's never done that. And he says, no, it is odd, but for some reason, we had to have a mechanism. We were told we had to have a mechanism to, uh, make sure that elected officials approved. It said, yes, this is what we wanna do. So, that's, that's what's going on.
So, I said, what are we doing?
They called me Friday night, that means you're gonna be, you're not doing one of those today until you determine what this first five-month window is gonna be.
See, that's what I thought, that they told us that it was gonna be every time we wanna spend some money, we're gonna have to do another resolution.
The problem is, they've never done that before. And that's why I challenged it, cuz it made no sense, it was totally out of realm. But they had no other way to do it, and apparently there was some criteria they had leveraged against them that they had to justify.
So we're not approving a resolution today?
No. Do we have to get the amounts for the first five months?
So, do I need to bring a public health proposal?
Pardon?
Do I need to bring a public health?
I think, I think you're gonna have to find out. Yeah, and what we'll have to do is, what Patrick brought in today is figure out which is that, which I think you were identifying, is, is the first five months, and then see what that amount is. And then probably, no, no earlier, well, I'd say next week, no, later than the week after that, we need to have that resolution ready to go with that dollar amount.
And then, do you wanna set a cap on public health? Because what I can tell you is, for public health, you probably just need to set a cap on the, like, come in under X amount of dollars because.
Wait, now he's saying.
Where are you at now? Well, just at best-case scenario, it could be, it could be a hundred thousand.
Still we, I do grant.
Yeah, he, they're.
You could do a hundred and twenty projects.
Yeah, Patrick said.
Early or ask for reimbursement for a platform.
Don't worry about me, Patrick's sitting at a thousand now approximately, so, all that stuff.
And not that we have to do all.
And then we would have a second round. And then we would have a second round. Then we would still want to cover that 191.
Some years as a second round, because it's not in the program.
So, do you want me to set a, do a proposal, do you want me to have a cap on it?
Well, a cap?
Do I need to cap it? Or just, you want, you want to see my full amount and approve whatever?
I was going to say, bring your proposal.
Bring the full amount, and you can decide from there.
Or why don't we, I mean, what can they say?
Right. Well, we have a cap on dollars. So, 191 is our, I don't want to bring in-
But I don't think you're going to go in.
Significant.
That the county's not going to cover.
Well, it's right now.
You're going to take those two people out right off the bat. That's a big challenge. I know you're going to take them out.
That's what I was thinking. I don't think you're granting them. And would you have to approve all the people that actually are doing it?
This won't change your numbers at all. I did include all of your laptops since March.
And my question is, if we already used grant funding, did we use grant funding to pay for those? Because we can't-
Can't double this.
We can't, if we used a grant to pay, that's what I would have to check on. If we used a grant to pay for them, we can't pay for them twice.
But that would be you. You would have to know if that's what you did. But what your plan, yeah, if that's where you guys...
Thank you. I'll check into it.
You could give us kind of a spreadsheet, Julie, and all what-
I will. I will. I'll just come up with something. And then you have to know that what I'm asking for, as a grant writer, I'm optimistic. I, I mean, you, you want to submit all that you can, and you may not get-
Sort them out later.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Good point.
Thank you, guys.
That would be wonderful. That will help the county.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
No action on that, right?
Nope, not today.
You want that by now, we're talking about? Yeah, probably by, I was going to say, you know, probably want to send stuff to Pat, to Patrick back here.
You need it by next Monday?
Maybe, if you can.
Some of that 191 is for the first five months, and some of it's for the second two months.
Does it give you a, does it give you a breakdown in there?
It actually goes through December.
Well, they, they close it out through December.
You only have this much in the first half, and you only have this much.
They need to have the paperwork done by December.
Is that what it says?
Well, you should.
It's just-
You'd have to spend things quickly now to make the difference.
Right, yeah. So, then some of-
Which any of these can be turned on anytime.
Yeah, all right, I get it. Probably good to get, to just get it set off early. And if we expend it early, it was a finite amount of money, anyway.
Good.
Just so we don't have to wait as long as FEMA money.
No kidding. I ju, I need to do amendments with you. We are, we, two more-
Yep, I think we're going to be doing one potentially into September.
You'll let me know.
Yep.
I think Cory's going to finally get his money. I got a good message from out in DC and stuff.
Oh, but it's not here yet.
Oh, he did have to, he did have to send some of the same stuff to him again.
He hasn't, the flood board money has not come in the board yet either. And so, I thought that would have been here by now, so I got to check on that. I thought Cory Avery was the last one.
Yeah, we're moving forward on the favor thing, too. So, we need to keep that pedal to the floor.
So, there was a fundraiser that I helped with for Ernst and Dave Young, and that was my number-one thing of, got to be behind us to get this FEMA money. And they go, I mean, they know it. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Julie.
Is this your stuff, too, Julie, or?
No.
Okay.
Oh, that's mine. That's mine, sorry. From my other office.
Cory, do you have a second, or can we help you quick? Is there something we can help you with, or?
I, I don't know. I'm just here to make an appeal regarding your building and zoning.
Okay. We don't have you on the agenda, but we can listen to you quick.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to make the brief as possible. My name is Perry Gilliland. I'm about north of town here on Oak Township.
What's your address?
53562221st Street. There you go.
Okay.
And what I'm trying to appeal is, I built my place there in 1987. And prior to that, I lived next door in Art Caldwell's old place for about six years. So, basically, I've been there since '80. And what I'm wanting to do at this particular point is use the existing easement on that property off the 221st Street. I want to go to the top of the hill and build an 1,800-square-foot ranch house. Now, I could build, but my issue is, is that I'm retired. So, as far as, what I'm wanting to do is build the house and not owe anything on it. But my dilemma is, what I'm understanding is, I need three acres of land in order to build. Each, I guess, what you guys have implemented here is, you have to have three acres per house. And I don't have three acres per house. I'm at 3.77.
That's in the last hills.
Does he confirm to nonconforming?
Right now, he is.
Wouldn't he? Would he?
What did building and zoning, I mean, what, have you, have you-
You would have built a house here, then?
No, no. It'd be back to the south. Let's see. I'm trying to see where you're exactly at.
This is your house here.
Okay, let me show you here. When I started this, basically, I had 1.77 right across here. And then I purchased the other two acres. I'm sorry, here it is. I'm going backwards. This is north. I want to come off of this driveway right here, come up as high as I can, go switch back, and build right here.
Okay.
Now-
Those are already existing parcels.
Correct.
Yeah, he would be nonconforming. Yeah.
He actually, he could come and ask for variance.
Existing nonconforming, yeah.
Yeah.
This is really a game changer for me, because I've been comfortable there since I built the house. And I really didn't want to be displaced. But in order to build, I have to cash this one out and grab the equity off of it to build the other one. So, there's my dilemma.
So, he wouldn't have both parcels, then?
Yeah, because this one's going to have to be sold. This one's going to have to be sold.
He's kind of unique there, because he has two existing pieces that are nonconforming. So, you can't make them bigger, because they can't, unless the neighbors would sell to him. But that's, that's-
That's limited now.
That's exactly, exactly. And then they wouldn't, they wouldn't exist. Yeah, they're only 2.77.
This property here is owned by Lloyd Brigantle. He's my neighbor.
Yeah.
And then this one here is Jared and Natalie Horton.
Horton. Yeah, this one's Horton here.
Yeah, this one's Horton. And I actually lived in this one for about six years while I was building this.
If it was a new split, we wouldn't let him, because he doesn't meet, he doesn't have the three acres. But he's an existing nonconforming. That's how I see it, but I don't make those decisions.
He can still get approval for a variance.
Yeah.
Wouldn't he be existing nonconforming?
I don't think he needs a variance.
Yes.
Yes.
If it predates the building code, then absolutely.
Yes.
Because it's, otherwise, nowadays, we don't allow parcels.
Well, it, it's dead property. There's nothing you can do with it. You're going to have to, you're going to have to give a variance on it to, to build on it.
As a matter of conversations-
And the reason for approving the variance would be because he's existing nonconforming, period, yeah.
This has zero impact as far as what, you know, the powers that be are trying to accomplish here as far as this road. I mean, and aesthetic, because I'll be totally up here out of the way where you can't even see. And I'm not putting in a new driveway. I come off the existing. So, it has zero impact as far as aesthetics.
So, did they turn you down for your permit?
Yeah, because, well, I mean, I can build, but I need the cash off of this one to do it.
Right. You have a piece that's already existing, which is nonconforming, and it's, we have that in a few places in Mills County. It's, you, you can't create a rule and then go back and retrofit everything, because it just doesn't work.
Do you need a couple of in and zoning and tax?
Um, it's probably going to cost me somewhere in the neighborhood of about $30,000 to $40,000 just to get to the top of the hill.
Probably.
So, that's why I'm here.
Probably.
Because, you know, that's a lot of liquid cash to come up with. And if I can't build, I mean, if I can't liquidate the other property.
Taylor, can we put him in touch with you and Darren and work it out?
So, you've already applied for the-
No, I've not. Actually, this is my first stop.
Yeah, I, I would go through the process, and then if they-
I don't think the zoning board have a problem.
I don't know that they would even have to, Richard. I think Darren can make that call.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would go apply for it, and tell them you talked with Tyler, the county attorney, and the board, and, and tell them that we brought up existing nonconforming, and just go through the process. And then, if they don't approve it, then come see us.
Yep, agree. Come see me.
Yeah, there you go. Go see Tyler. That's even better.
Thank you, guys.
You can stay for the meeting.
I appreciate it. I wouldn't know what you're talking about anyway. That's just true.
Sometimes we don't either.
Thank you.
I gave her the final draft of the closing services agreement with clear title. I think you guys already approved to sign it, but just whenever you get time.
Where's that?
Taking my stuff, lady.
The only thing that clear title want to change is the method of us paying them. We had to flush out how, since all the funding for each closing is coming through us, we determined that we're just going to have to write checks.
Each one.
Get them up to them, and-
It's the best way to keep it.
And then I'm, I'm going to have the actual landowners come into my office to sign all the documents prior to the actual closing date, so we can just do a quick money disbursement on closing.
Probably the best way to keep a paper trail.
I think so.
Otherwise, you're going to keep a notepad somewhere, one check, and it's, you're just looking for mistakes.
Yep. So, we've got all that flushed out. It's good where the agreement stands. And we're just waiting on asbestos inspections.
And how's that going? Is it?
I think so.
Almost done?
I need to follow up with Alexis today and figure out where that's at, because it should be posted down by the end of the week. And then we'll put the demolition and mitigation, or FPs out. And that'll be the last piece before we start closing out.
Perfect.
It's good.
Good.
I think I'll brief them about it, but I didn't get any help.
Okay.
Take care.
I do.
Next on the agenda is the authorize the chair to sign MOU with Potawatomi County. What's, what are we understanding?
This is, this, here about two months ago, an informal agreement was made where the Pot County Direct Communications provided our EMS services, 10, you know, we have 10 ambulances in the county, and they provided them with 10 portables in Pot County with the area hospital talk groups in them. And this included the Omaha trauma centers. I think it's got Bellevue in it also. And there was concern, there was concern with, since this is part of the Omaha Metro Orion system, that there was, you know, concern. We're, this is something I tried to get done months ago, and was having difficulties, because there was concern about the Orion Board not approving the Nebraska side, and they thought there was going to be costs associated with access fees. So, the decision was made is just loan Mills County supportable radios with those talk groups in them. And this is basically the accumulation of this. To get a formal agreement between the board, Pot County asked that we would borrow these radios with the use of those talk groups, one per ambulance. It tells us time if something came into formulation where they had to pull them back, you know, for some reason, which he doesn't anticipate. You know, we're doing that right now. I think the long-term goal is, is to get the permission of the Orion group to allow us to put those talk groups in our radios, and then they can have their portable radios back, because they're quite expensive. So, I thought it was an odd way of doing this, but apparently, this is the, the, what the communications department, under the sheriff's department up in Pot County came up with as an interim. Tyler has looked us over. There was some, some word change we did, because initially, when you sent this down here, it said Mercy and Jenny only in it. And it was meant to mean we were going to keep the radios, which has all the other hospitals in it in Nebraska. So, I, the director came down, sat down about it with me with it, and I said, "We've got to change this." And then there was another thing when it came back that I talked to Tyler about and need to be clarified. So, I sent that minor word change up to, back to their county attorney. And it finally got back, and it reads how it needs to read. So, going forward, our EMS services, instead of having to get on their cell phone to call the hospital and route, will be able to talk directly through a talk group to the Mercy desk at the Mercy Room.
But we're not paying for the radios. We're not renting the-
It says very clear in here, "I offered to pay access fees just to get access to the talk groups," because the Orion system has an access fee schedule that they charge all their members, which Pot County is one of those here in Iowa. So, but in here, very clearly says, "We will not pay any access fees," because we're actually using their portables, is what we're doing.
Okay.
And that's how we did it. I think eventually, Potawatomi County may be going to the 700 system also down the road. But it's a monumental task for them because of the cost. It's a pretty, pretty big cost for them. And they know they have to do some upgrades. The Orion group, at least on Nebraska side, has been doing some upgrades in their firmware and their radio technology. And sooner or later, Pot County is going to have to transition to that upgrade. And so, that's where the decision is going to be made on what they do, I think, up there. And to make more sense, then, with the state, they would still have interoperability with Nebraska, because that's being worked out with the state Iowa and Nebraska. And I don't think that would be a big issue. It's just that I think they need to get all of the SC system, they have to provide for more interoperability with contiguous counties. Now, it's kind of hard, right now, for fire, rescue. We talked about it. I've been trying to get some talk groups, or give us some of our talk groups, so we can interop better. And they're just, they're just, I'm not saying they're resistant. They just want to work other solutions. So, we're looking now possibly using some regional talk groups the state gave us, and that they applied for through the state Iowa, that's in their radio system and their comm center, not out in their field radios, in the comm center, which would allow them, if Pot County departments come into here, and we say we're on R43, which is a state regional chat talk group, then they would patch their people into that talk group coming down to us, and it'd be vice versa going up there. I don't think it's the best optimum solution, but it is a solution to give us better radio interoperability when we go across county lines.
Okay. Should we approve it, guys?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to authorize the chair supervisor, Lonnie Mayberry, to sign the MOU with Pot County.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to authorize the chair to sign a MOU with Potawatomi County. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this one of the originals here?
Yeah, both of those are.
Okay.
I gave them two. That's all I had. The ones you left me. The nicer paper comes from him. You should know they wanted me.
I was going to say, I can tell this came from Larry.
Send those up to get-
Thick, nice, glossy.
Yeah, it's, it's good stuff.
We buy the cheap stuff.
Where's the, I gave it to you.
I think we have some nice stuff on. We're never used.
I never needed it. Go borrow. Like colored paper, maybe colored paper. He should have got a good supply of that, too.
Left it loose, sir. Thank you.
There you go, a test done.
Oh, there isn't? I thought there was. No?
Me and Jess.
It's just a MOU, it's about a 20-day. So, basically, these will be set up, and then we'll get one back in the mail, okay?
Oh, okay.
And I'll stay to form action next week up there. We'll be done with that for now.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Cory, you're up to bat.
All right. Uh, no utility permits for this week.
Okay, bye.
It was easy.
Okay, bye. Thanks.
So, comes our first action item, driveway variance, just north of Mar Avenue on 315th Street.
Do you have an address, or?
Um, no, I do not.
Mar and 315?
Yep. So, just south of Melbourne. It's, uh, just south of Melbourne, just north of Mar Avenue. Yep. So, just south of Malvern. It's, uh, just south of Malvern, just north of Mar Avenue.
South of Malvern? Who's the person?
Monty West.
Oh.
But he's... But it's, I think it's kind of a Monty West and, uh, Malvern Economic Development Corporation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's seven lots that you'll see. Driveway request for here. Um, he's got some pipe culverts actually laid out where, I believe that's where the location is, so... Six lots. I can't count. Six lots there.
Just below the housing development?
Yes.
What's one? Where's the golf course? Where's one?
North of it. Just to the east. Well, the golf course is just to the northeast.
Oh, there's, oh, there we are.
Between new holes will be just to the east.
This is a T intersection.
Yes. Um, it, we denied the vari- or the application for separation. Um, the reason...
Still on the road and they don't?
So, I looked back, I don't know, a year ago, when, uh, we had the driveways on the south side of the subdivision. And, and in the agreement, we still have the maintenance and jurisdiction of the road, even though the city annexed to the center line of, uh, Mar and three hundred and fifteenth street, but...
Did it go centrally?
Uh, but yeah, in the agreement, we still have...
Still maintain it? Okay. I thought they went to the right-of-way line, but okay.
Uh, the, the original plan for the subdivision shows one entrance for those, uh, six lots.
This is where they built it. Yeah, a little frontage road.
And, and so my recommendation is to approve the vi- variance application on the condition, uh, will be servicing all six, uh, lots. I did call economic, Malvern Economic Development, Jay Burdick, yesterday, talked about, through with him, said, hey, we, we still wanna have limited access points from three hundred and fifteenth street. Um, if you guys, we'd like you to stick to your original plan, have only one access off of three hundred and fifteenth street for safety reasons. And, and to go ahead and, for you guys, if you, even if you don't wanna build the frontage road right away, throughout at least our future plans, do have the frontage road, so. He thought that was fine. They seemed to have a problem with it.
So, Corey, come out, start with, uh, house seven.
They were gonna, they, they were gonna build a road. Here, you can see where they built the dirt.
Right.
They're gonna come up here in this long dirt path here.
That will be a road.
A frontage road, basically a driveway.
This would be Wabash Trace Street. And that'd be a city of Malvern Road.
Yes.
It would not be a county road, because that is in the city property.
Okay.
And they just didn't build that road to begin with for cost?
And, and it sounds like in, in that rule, they don't plan to build it in the near future as far as concrete. I said, well, could you at least, you know, grade it, throw some rock on it, and, and...
Well, I guarantee...
I'll remember, this board will remember that we're, this, this is to be per plan, and this is gonna be the only access off three hundred and fifteenth. Jay didn't say that problem.
So they're not planning on concreting that road? So you've got a brand-new house and...
Well, and it sounds like, uh, Jay wasn't too sure they were gonna be able to put houses there. Um, he, he was talking about maybe finding alternative uses for those lots already, so, um...
We're having some big water issues.
Big water issues.
Big water issues.
Like underground water issues.
Really?
He, he talked about maybe just somehow putting in storage slots there for those, those...
They got a basement right up in here on the hill that they dug, and the water's coming up through the floor on the hill. It could, it caught spring when they dug the basement.
Ah, no kidding?
Those clay layers can, can do that in the hills.
Yeah, they dug the basement and opened it up. Some of the old boys say it was still wet up there back in the day and they remembered it, but...
Ah, I did not know that.
So...
So we're gonna, you're asking for a variance to allow one or more house, more, more than one house? Or what do you, what's our variance?
To approve the variance application on condition, it will be access to all six lots.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the driveway variance application on three hundred and fifteenth street north of Mar Avenue for the proposed or existing new subdivision in the town of Malvern. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. And I'll put, I'll put the exact subdi- I can't remember what the subdivision's officially called.
Oh.
But I'll put the exact subdivision. Oh, yeah, it's right there.
All right, so if we approve for this variance...
Fairview Hills.
For this subdivision, we decide to do some economic development. Is that gonna change any matters, do you think?
What's that?
If we approve for the, for the, uh, application variance for the subdivision, but they then decide to do an economic develop, would that make a difference, different, different problem?
Well, that's who he's working with now.
Yeah.
For a subdivision?
Economic development, he's where, he's... This is Malvern.
Right. For housing, for those houses. But if they can't do those houses, because you said maybe possibly it'd be different?
And we'd still only allow one?
It would still allow.
One access for those six lots. Um, I mean, don't say six houses. We'll, we'll just specify the lots.
Okay, okay.
And so if it's, if something else goes in inside of, instead of a house?
It would still be that.
That lot.
Okay.
Two through seven. Okay, your signature about that.
Yes, sir. Shieldburg wants money, huh?
Yes. So we completed our farm-to-market rock project, uh, the two thousand and nineteen farm-to-market rock project. The original contract amount was two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Eighty-three, you say?
Swing it against.
Original contract amount was two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, forty-four cents. The, um, amount used was two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, overrun of, um, half a percent, so we were...
Three thousand and fifty-five or something.
Yeah, I mean, you, we, we, trucks come in twenty, twenty-ton, thirty-ton loads, and so you, you get close, you, uh, it, it's just a very small overrun. We're talking, uh, how many, hundred so tons we had. Um, so we're just looking for approval to do the one, and final pay voucher to Shieldburg Construction FM CO sixty-five parent one oh eight.
What if we say no?
Well, then we're in a really bad...
What are they gonna come and get the rock? Come, come get it. They wanted it. I make a motion to pay Shieldburg's, their, their, uh, bill for our gravel roads, for our rock.
I will mention, so this is, uh, the FM account budget, not a...
Farm-to-market account, okay?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to pay Shieldburg two eleven one eighty-four twenty-nine for farm-to-market rock. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Right below me. We did, I thought we timed that pretty well, uh, with, with dust control coming in after it and all those roads, so...
How about our twenty-twenty farm-to-market?
We, we, uh, postponed that to twenty-twenty-one.
Good.
But we, we will be playing catch-up for another year, probably, um...
Till we get caught up.
Just with the flooding. And we're, we're still rocking some of those roads that were flood damaged. And, and I, I'll probably have to file an extension for, for those repairs that were, need to be done by September twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Um, it's pretty easy to get an extension according to Iowa Homeland Security, and I already put that motion in process, so...
Okay.
Um, for general discussion, um, I should've grabbed Julie when she was here. I, I was curious if any department is still doing daily temperature checks of employees.
Um, I can say no in ours, and I don't know about the troopers if they still are or not, but, you know.
As you can imagine, it can be difficult sometimes to get the guys to always stop in and get their temperature check.
I don't...
One of my foremen is, is, is getting a little tired of having to be the, the bad guy and enforce this, and so we're kinda looking to maybe stopping that, um, and just, uh, tell people, I mean...
Get kicked out downstairs?
Still enforce the point. Don't come to work if you're feeling sick. Don't, don't come in if you've got any kind of simple sneeze and whatever.
They've got better things to do. They take temperatures. We need to, we need to live.
So...
We need to work. We need to move on.
I think you're fine, Corey.
And, and everybody's been good about staying, I mean, one guy had a sinus and, uh, issues, a little, he was congested, and they usually probably come to work, but being smart, wait until it clear up and make sure that you're okay. Go get, go get your test Iowa test if you really need to, and so. I think we've done really well. Uh, we haven't had any positive cases in the department.
Not too many.
Yeah. Uh, kind of, uh, Ford heads up in case you guys get contacted from landowner. Um, there's, we've got new construction on Bungee Avenue, WSI building. They're just, uh, east of I twenty-nine interchange. Uh, they have a new driveway going in that they've installed, placed two, uh, twin forty-eight inch culverts. We approved their driveway permit, um, in June, uh, mid-June. They had the big rain, two, three-inch rain. Uh, farmer to the north, uh, noticed he had water stain in his field. He talked to the contractor, put in the driveways, and hey, these tubes are taller than the crossroad box culvert. But there's an issue of backing up water in my lane. Um, contractor just kinda brushed it off. The farmer came to my office, so we got involved, went down, shot some shots, some G, GPS elevations, and this is what you're looking at. Um, yeah, if you wanna bring it up, it'd be easier. So here's, here's their building site.
Yeah.
Here's a crossroad box culvert, drainage ditch comes down north to south, goes through box culvert. The water is backing up into this field, and I do, I did put a picture of that in, that packet in there. Yes, yes, that's correct. Their new driveway and their box culvert and their pipe culverts. Um, I had Richard go out and shoot, um, GPS elevations. If you look at this south ditch on the top, you'll see that the top of the silt, so then now the flow line of this box culvert's nine hundred and sixty-six point six one. And then it goes up seventy-five hundreds to where the contractor placed his two forty-eight inch culverts. So, and then it goes down, uh, to the west or goes to the east, and it goes through that driveway, existing driveway into St. Mary's Drainage Ditch.
The drainage ditch over there, Corey?
Yeah, that runs alongside the railroad.
All right. Got it.
I went and looked at the original grading plan of Highway three-ten, or previously what Bungee was called. Um, grading plan shows, uh, ditch flows from west to east from that box culvert to St. Mary's Drainage Ditch. I looked at historical photos of aerials, which I added in here, and it shows water goes, it appears to show water goes north to south, east to west, or west to east, excuse me. Um, so when the farmer brought this to our attention, knowing a little bit about Iowa, uh, code four sixty-eight, natural flow of water, I knew it might be a problem where if we allowed somebody put a culvert in, that was seventy-five hundreds higher than what the two existing culverts were, flow line was. Uh, we talked to, I sent an email, uh, two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, with our findings to the project manager. Said, hey, we're, we've got an issue here. Um, we've kinda gone back and forth. They said, well, we designed it, these flow, these culverts to flow of the ditch flow line. I understand that, but you should've designed it to existing culvert flow line.
Clean the ditch out.
And, and, and they said, well, you guys permitted it. It's, it's not our problem. I pulled up the county ordinance. I said, uh, contractors are to notify the engineer when the driveway's complete for approval or rejection. So I said, I, I think we could still reject it, and you guys would still be required to, to lower it. Um, they, they don't wanna lower it. I understand, because...
Is it paved already?
They're gonna have to. They're not paved. They're, and, and their paving schedules coming up. So now is the time to do it. But they're big forty-eight inch RCP culvert set, come in four-foot pieces that weigh a lot, and it, and it's, it is costly. Um, we did, we had a conference call then last Thursday. Um, basically repeated what I just told you guys. Um, I wish we would've caught it in permitting. I wish we, uh, I wish we would've gave you the approved permit without checking that, um, but, but we still need to lower it. Uh, at, at one point, it says, we don't see it's our fault.
Your permit wasn't to give permission to put it in.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
To...
It wasn't to put it in at that elevation. It was to put it in.
Yeah, I looked on the permit. It never, doesn't state any elevations. Um...
They need to lower it.
And now, uh, they kinda got to the point where it's not our problem. This is a county problem. Um, if you guys, uh, and I said, well, if, if you guys don't change it, I'll reject the driveway. You don't have to use the existing driveway to the east. And so if you hold us up, we'll hold the county liable for any damages or delays in opening this facility. And...
I don't think so.
And that's kinda where we left off. I, uh, sent them an email yesterday, giving them, lending all of branch, saying, hey, we'll look at splitting the cost for lowering these culverts. We understand. Both sides could've, could've worked, and so...
They're looking for some tax breaks, too, so there's other ways to play games.
So, uh, didn't get a response back from them yesterday. I called them before I came this morning. Uh, they sounded a little more amicable, and we're looking at some other ideas. Uh, they really don't wanna have to move these culverts. They talked, well, would it be possible to put in a smaller culvert along the side of it at the correct elevation? Get the water running through there, and then if water's gonna hit capacity in that small culvert, by then it'll be high enough to go through the two forty-eight inches. I, I think it's worth exploring whether that's possible or not.
Instead of one big one, one massive?
Two.
Two big ones.
Two, two big ones, and so...
So obviously, the, the flow, it's required two forty-eights, or at least something a little smaller than that, so they oversized it.
It, they did oversize it.
Yeah, they should, but...
Right.
Yeah, that's your call, buddy.
So, trying to work with them.
Good.
Um, there was, it was a little heated Thursday. Uh, I will just say, you guys know I'm a college basketball official. People yelling at me and screaming, it's not, it's, it's not gonna ma- make me change.
That's a problem.
How I interact with them. I had, uh, I had Nick Johnson on the phone, sitting in on the conference call, too, so a little vouch for me. I, I tried to, I was, was calm and collected as I could be, and...
Was this the engineer or the owner?
It was the owner. That got a little heated, but, um... They've, they've since responded. We'll see how they officially respond to my email. They, they said they'd respond in the email, not later today.
One way or another, we need to get the flow lower than what they got here, so...
Yep.
How do you, how soon can you decide if that, Nate Gilbert would fix it for them?
I think we'd look at what they propose, see what we have for right-of-way, which side they propose is on, whether it's the north or the south side. I think we'd look at what they propose, see what we have for right of way, which side they propose is on, whether it's the north or the south side. And, and, and also look at the ditch flow line and see, because we'll, we, we gotta do some ditch cleaning. Cause there is a, a little bit of a hump um that we make sure we get to get positive.
Do that though, that's just day to day business.
I'm sitting here thinking, when they put in their culverts which is a little bit higher, did they not think that it was gonna back up maybe? Some water across the way?
They, they designed it to the ditch flow line, which.
Should use waters.
I won't argue that because they said, well, we just put it where the ditch is, so, so it shouldn't be our problem, but. But I don't think.
When you start messing with the bottom people down there, you.
And, and that was something I told them, they know, they're aware. I said, hey, there's a project just on the west side of the interstate that had an injunction on it because. Of some water drainage issues in two thousand sixteen. I don't think it is outside of the range of possibilities that we would be. Liable for allowing them to put in a culvert.
Be the first thing we file for is to make them stop their whole process. They don't want that.
It doesn't look good on us. They need to work with us too. We'll give a little, they give a little, let's, let's get it done.
Yep, so just in case, they, because they did.
Now's the time to do it.
They did mention, how do we, how do we talk to the board? Do we need to talk to the county attorney? So, we gave them the information, said you, there's a visitor recognition period. Yeah, and, and I said, yeah, we can get you on the agenda or you can come for visitor recognition comments.
You know, I've kind of been in contact with Bob. I keep telling him, I said, when you're here, stop by at our meeting and tell us how things are going.
Bob Schroder, Schroeder?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, everybody's interested of, how is the, whereabouts are they? It would be a, a good thing to hear from them.
But just in case that, that goes any farther.
Thank you sir.
Guys are updated. Any other up, general discussion I had, uh, go ahead.
Uh, I don't know. Anyway, down on three hundred twelfth street, uh, we did some re-rocking and some grading. And the maintainer pulled the shoulders, which created a lot of uh sod, dirt. Okay, all that rock and stuff was pushed off into the greater ditch and then they laid new rock down. I have a problem with if our maintainers, I mean, I drove some gravel roads, I was on some last night. We're down to twelve, fourteen feet wide, the grass is encroached this far on each side. Now these guys, when they come out there, they scrape across the top of the grass because they don't want to mess with the big sod bumps and stuff. Well. If they don't get rid of this stuff, what are we gonna do with it? It's gonna be the same problem. They gravel it all up, they push all of our rock and stuff in the ditch. That's not maintaining our roads properly Cory. Uh, I don't know who you had talked to down there, but. Some of these maintainer guys are just not taking the responsibility, I feel, in maintaining the roads properly. Cause if they go around right now, you're gonna have wind roads as big as this table in order to get the gravel back out of the grass. So. Whether you need to do a little uh backside chewing down there or what, somebody, but uh, I feel why, why are we rocking those? Why did we put down new rock? I mean, they could have taken that sod and stuff and shifted it back and forth for a couple of days or a week. You know, saved the rock, yeah, it would have made it messy, but we just still had a lot of rock on our road, so.
So we, we graded and we left the wind road dirt and sod and then we rocked it.
No, we pushed, we pushed the wind road and stuff off into the ditch.
And we're talking three hundred twelfth streets south of.
Yeah, it's, it's a short, it's a short stretch, but it's still the idea. How many other places have they done this? I mean uh.
You said three twelve or three fifteen?
Three hundred and twelve. And I realize we've had a lot of moisture and stuff, but still uh, there's some rock roads. You know, you, if you pass, you meet somebody, you're off in the grass and the first peop- thing people do, they, they only inch over because, well, that's where the shoulder is. You can't, you can't tell where the shoulder of the road is in a lot of these places.
Oh yeah, only other item I had for general discussion was on one hundred ninetieth street, kind of an update. Um, pavement's been poured. Um, now they're moving on to shouldering.
So what are you putting on that? Is it a rock shoulder?
Yes, so.
Get that rock over here or were they trucking that from?
They were bringing it in from Crescent.
Okay.
So, um, that was, that was the only place they didn't get a class B or the shoulder rock. Uh, do the shouldering, guard rail at the four corners, the bridge of the overpass and painting. And we're, we'll open it up to traffic. We'll, we'll do the remaining seeding and fertilizing, mulch chain, uh, other small items. With the roadway open. Our, we are, we are already having trouble keeping the public off of the road since they see that's been paved. Um, even though there's no shoulders, um, there's quite the drop off right now, so.
I think it's a pavement, it's got eight.
Uh, it's eight, yesterday's eight. No, it's nine, it's nine inches, it's nine inches, because we have nine and six, six uh, in the modified sub that's underneath, so. It's coming right along though, so looking forward to getting that roadway open and. We've already got the clearance from, we met with uh Railroad B N S F down there last week. They checked off uh their portion or, or everything inside the railroad right of way. We do have to have a flagger one more day when they, we come in and do the seeding.
They didn't quite get all their.
On a, when we do all the seeding in their right of way area. Uh, otherwise they were happy with the, the drainage and. They brought up the road closure, so we will close one hundred eighty street at grade crossing. And we have to do that within thirty days of opening one hundred ninetieth street, so we'll be ready to do that. We, we've got the materials getting ordered. It should be in about two, three weeks, my guess.
We'll, we'll all be ducking for a while.
We, uh, uh, I know there was some pushback on that before the project even began, I imagine. There'll probably be some, but. Got a nice new paved road just a mile down to cross. And you'll never have to wait for a, a train.
Better hope not.
They can practice before they get to the racetrack.
Apparently people have been practicing racing uh on one hundred ninetieth street already.
Street shot.
Oh yeah, I know. Got over the hill.
That's where I'd be practicing.
Exactly right.
Uh, Jason technician um saw multiple vehicles drive all the way through yesterday. Um, at one point he was leaving to, to go up to A P to get a drink. And so he's right there at the north end of the project and he saw about four bikes, motorbike, motorcycles come down. And just kind of stopped right at the construction entrance and he, and he just stayed parked at the construction entrance and then they finally turned around and went back north. I told him, take pictures, take pictures if you can of anybody's license plate driving through, that's about.
It's still signed, road closed, right?
It's still signed, we, I, I, they have, the contractor has to fill out their daily diary that says that they check them twice a day in the morning and at night, so. Make sure, I told Jason, make sure everything's up and I've been on about traffic control for a while, so. About all we can do.
Alright, thank you sir.
Quick update on the gentleman that was in, talking about building in the Les Hills, talked to Darren. He explained a little differently to Darren that he would like to change the parcels so he can keep his existing shed and I said, okay, that's a whole different issue.
Yeah, potatoes and tomatoes, yeah.
Just so you guys know, if, if he comes back in and talks to you, then Darren and I.
It's something to do by an easement, then we never know.
That's, yeah, I mean, there's.
The light fuse on it.
Just so you guys know, it's not as cut and dry as what it.
Most things aren't. There's usually two sides. Perfect. Next item on the agenda is the FEMA opt-out properties. How many quitters do we have?
I currently have ten.
Good.
And so we have to um accept these. I have um Jessica Schmidt at six one two nine five hundred ninety-fifth. I have San Jose Rodriguez at six oh three oh one Karns.
And these are replies from the package you sent out that said, we would like to opt out of this, buy out, okay.
And then we have Heather Gentman, Gentlemen on one seven four eight seven Hammond. Ashley Leonard on six oh five eight four hundred ninety-fifth. Roland Rasmussen, five seven seven two eight hundred ninety seventh street. Ralph Birch, two oh three one six paddock. Um, Perry Reef, I think we talked about his already, two one five nine eight Jenkins and Jim Robertson. On five seven three four nine hundred seventy-fifth. Um, Romero, Roberto Ramirez, six oh five four six Karns.
Karns?
Karns Road, yeah, six oh five four six. One more, and we have two oh nine 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 Lambert, um Brad Skivens.
They opted out.
They opted out.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We have those, then, yeah.
What was your Karns address again?
Uh, my Karns is, well, I got a couple of them, six oh three oh one. Maybe I only have one.
Oh wow, okay.
Which one?
Yeah, um, and then six oh five four six as well.
Romero.
Problem being we've got uh two of them. Okay, and problem being we have a couple that we're doing the mortgage loan stuff, so we'll be out that money, but.
Doing the what?
The mortgage loan. They were doing the mortgage assistance. We have probably three of them in that category that.
So even though they were doing the mortgage assistance, they don't have to pay that back now?
It was only contingent that it would be paid back at the buyout. That was never, we can't force any of that. It's just money we're gonna lose. As having access to in the flood recovery funds, but it's. Um, and then I also had thought that we, well, the next action item has.
Even by signing up for the flood recovery fund or mortgage assistance, there, there's no, there was no stipulation in there?
They couldn't force you. If you signed up for the mortgage assistance, they couldn't force you to say you have to take the buyout.
They couldn't.
No, no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they couldn't force you, so that's.
So they got a year and a half of mortgage payments paid for.
Well, yeah, starting in Jan- well, actually January is when the mortgage assistance, so January to now, but they're done. They can't. That is start, they said September one, no more, so they're on their own now. So, and.
Are we talking big money?
There's a, I mean, uh, probably, there might be thirty thousand total, total. But there are several who've moved away that won't be taking advantage of that thirty-one thousand, so that's just one right there. So, it kind of, it kind of waivers and evens out. But in order, I thought they had moved up the other, we can go ahead and do this part and then we can go to the next part, so.
Will I make a motion for uh, for these people for the opt-out properties, FEMA?
So I then send it to Homeland Security and let them know, then they can move the other projects and change the numbers around a little bit. And the next item would be that we have to, I thought that it just automatically moved certain entities up, but it doesn't. We, you have to authorize that, yeah.
We're the owners of the, let me say that. Mr. Carroll, did you second that?
Yes sir, I did.
Do you have a motion in a second to approve the FEMA opt-out properties? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
We need you to sign on that Carol or we just?
Uh, no, I just have to check that it was, the date it was checked, that it was approved. So, on that, going with the next thing, um, I, I haven't got a straight answer because, and I think they, I mean, it, it's in process. Jane Genels was down on that second, but it's going forward, so I don't believe that's an issue. Um, Dale Elephant was another one that was on that second listing that didn't get a, a letter to say, hey, we'll move forward. But now that we've done those, we can send him a letter to, on his property. And then the other one, uh, which I didn't realize was Gutchen writers, didn't receive a letter. So this will put them up to the buyout as well. So that will allow them to move to the buyout list.
Three properties?
Carol, what was the first one? Olive, Gutchen writers and who was the other one?
Christiansen.
Okay.
And I think Christiansen's already there. He's under a whole diff- and I think he was put there just because of the monies that we're using to do theirs, which is a flood recovery.
And you've received the info back from all three of those that said, we want to be on this still?
I have, I have not heard anything from any of them, but they didn't get any paperwork, so they don't have, yeah.
Good. Alright, do we have a motion to approve those people?
I make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve, to move three properties to the buyout list. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now we're ready for J E O.
Yeah, come on up.
Wherever you want to sit, wherever you're comfortable at.
Alright, so this is for task order two point seven point one. This is phase one archaeological survey. For the Mills County Site Sixteen, this is for one point three acres to do that phase one archaeological survey for the Mission Botany Watershed Projects.
And where's that, that's what Cory was looking for?
Um, you know, and I didn't, I don't have a map associated with this task order, so.
No name or anything?
Okay, what's that? Normally, normally we have a name associated with the sites, but this particular one didn't and I think it's a.
Is it one of our road projects then?
Yeah.
Might be. See, and I don't use the same numbers as what J E O uses. I use the number the state uses. So their site number, I have a cross reference on my laptop, but let me look. Here, I bet I have it. But I can find it.
I want to have them both up in case this is a green line.
It's like, where are we going to bring them?
Cause I think this is in the southern part of the county if I remember right, where this green, where this green structure is.
Both of the ones, I believe with Cory are greenway structures.
Right.
Greenway? Greenway is a gentleman that used to be the engineer that designed them.
Greenwood.
Greenwood, that's.
Greenwood.
Greenwood. Greenwood structure. Where are we at?
Somewhere where there's a ditch.
Yeah, cause I think there's two, there's two. One did not require archaeological survey and the other one did, so.
You say two hundred and ten? That's three hundreds.
That's where she's.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
And what is this going to be?
So they'll do an onsite archaeological survey, so they'll come out, they'll do some, um, some desktop survey before they go out to get an idea of what could be out there potentially. Um, they look at historical maps and aerial photographs. Um, if they determine that there is a chance, a certain percentage. That there is, there could be some archaeological artifacts out there, then they'll do potentially, um, they'll take some, some core samples. And see if they come up with anything and then what the probability is that, that there could be further items out on site. To this point, um, out of. To this point, um, out of, actually can't, can't remember how many we've done so far, I would say twenty some, twenty sites or so, like, none of them have moved beyond the phase one survey, have required additional surveys, so. I anticipate that they would go out and do the phase one survey and provide the report so that we can meet the IEDA requirement, submit it.
And they really had to be close to the Missouri River, wouldn't they?
Four hundred and fifteenth in Ingram.
Four hundred and fifteenth in Ingram.
We don't have a fourth, do we?
We're there. In Ingram?
Yep.
That's gotta be up into Magru territory.
There it is, over here, right? Right in here. Up there.
Little swell coming down through there, so.
Yep.
Four hundred and fifteenth in Ingram's close enough for me.
And who is that, Carol?
That's for the county, this is a particular, the two county projects are going from a greenwood structure to like a drop culvert that'll have, hold the water, slow down the flow, reduce, um, the erosion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And cost is what's nice about it, yeah.
Pretty low cost.
Thank you. Well, yeah, cause Cory said these was gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
You know, you tear the road out and you tear the tube out, and then you gotta lay all this stuff back and.
Very sweet.
Do you approve it, guys?
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve task order two point seven point one, phase one archaeological survey for the project in Mills County. Four hundred and fifteenth in Ingram, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
You want my autograph? Here, you want me to date this the eighteenth?
Um, either is fine, so I'll leave a hard copy, you guys want one hard copy, okay. All right, and then we'll put one also, so I'll go ahead and give you that one there.
There you are. Very welcome. That was easy. We can make some color copies of that too, if you need.
Yeah.
And I just need the ones, so if I just have one with a signature, I'm thinking of that.
Simple enough.
Do you see this, Carol, report?
Yes, see if there's any relatives on there.
Lonnie.
Believe me, it's been, it's happened before.
Had a lot of, had a lot of repeaters in there, geez.
Having nothing else to do, is there?
Frank can get in trouble.
So have you had several to bid?
Six at the.
You've got six.
Well, we had six come out to the, um, pre-bid meeting.
Okay.
And it is not a required pre-bid meeting, so, you know, we could have additional that are familiar with the area that did not come to that.
Got it.
But we'll find out tomorrow, open bid tomorrow, so, see how that goes, hopefully good, that's the first one, and it's a pretty big one. So, I, uh, laughed because Ross was talking about he's pretty, pretty well behaved, I didn't realize they could each other against each other, things like that, he said that contractors can be. That's a big one, so, and that's the one up here, um, we've got the two bank stabilizations are going first, so, they'll be the two biggest projects.
Thank you, guys. Will I see you tomorrow, or will somebody else be showing up?
Jake will be here for that one.
Okay, all right.
But I'll be available for questions, like they told me.
And we have a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing next week.
At eight?
At eight fifteen.
Is it at eight fifteen?
No, it says eight o'clock, but that's up to, I guess.
It has to be at eight, and if it's published at eight, then it has to be at eight.
I think he's doing an addendum to, to, um, coincide with the actual beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yes.
He's gonna change that, he's supposed to be getting it out today.
He won't have time to get it in the paper for next week.
Well, that's what he texted me this morning.
If he's doing it today, our paper comes out tomorrow. And they wouldn't, they don't accept anything after Friday. Basically, to put in Monday.
We'll be here at eight.
And Alvern is Monday, so, we'll just know that we're gonna be here, yeah, and that somebody will be here to explain things quick. That would be helpful.
Somebody will be here.
Yeah, someone, yeah.
It should be Jake, can't speak for him, I believe. Tomorrow, we have this first day of the meeting down in Fremont County, and then I will be up here for a bit over eight as well.
Eleven. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're baiting some taxes, it looks like.
Yeah, better go get Bill.
Those elusive, you better get your roll call pen out there, lady.
She's got it, she's, she's got it straight now, she thinks she's got it figured out, and go grab it, Bill.
Geez. Well, I got paper last Thursday from Malvern, I was skimming through, and I see JEO Consulting, I'm going, oh, no, not again, yes. So I got on the phone yesterday morning and, uh.
Your bid openings here?
Make sure.
Well, the bid opening for the projects that Mike Lee and stuff came in, that's tomorrow in, in New York County, in, in the Fremont and Mills County.
Well, it's not here, though, is it?
No.
We don't have to be here for it, okay.
No, I'm, I'm gonna attend it down at the engineer's office, but our public hearing is next Tuesday morning at eight o'clock on the twenty fifth. And I says, hey, folks, and so even Carol, Cara, I did a little backside chewing on both of them, and just told them, I says, you know, you should correspond with the people you're working with, they said, well, that would be a good idea. And that's the reason, that's the reason Jake's trying to get this changed, I says, you're not gonna change it now.
No.
But here is our.
Wouldn't you call first, and then, maybe, I don't know. We'll thank you very much.
Yeah, you, I bet, you're thinking.
Eleven thousand, that's steeply.
Yeah, but it's been in tax sale since two thousand and eleven on the county side, and I just, this is one of them that, um, the city of Malvern took as an abandoned property. I just found, it, this was clear back like in May, and I just now found out about it in, in the middle of July. And so I thought I'd go ahead and get the resolutions done, so I can get it stricken off of the tax records, but I can't, but I can't do it right now because we're in the middle of bringing the other taxes over, but I thought, let's get this out of the way, so then I can do it, so. So it's the Gary Hardman, uh, property, it has been abandoned for several years, he has deceased, but the Malvern, uh, city of Malvern decided to take it over. And, um, they will get the tax statement on it, and then until they decide what they're gonna do, they'll, they'll start paying taxes from this time forward, until they decide what, if they're gonna sell it.
They get a, they will, they won't exempt themselves from taxes because they're owned?
They can't, they can't until they get it either to, say, a park, or a, if they, they have to pay the taxes till it is sold to, say, you wanna buy it. So they can either pay the taxes, or they can drop your, your money and have you pay the taxes, so.
Third Avenue, seven oh six Third Avenue.
Standby the water plant down in this.
Oh.
West, northwest corner of, of Malvern.
Well, maybe they can make a little park out of it.
Well, or at least, uh, sell it to somebody who wouldn't want to put, it, it looks like it needs tore down, is what it looks like, from what I've seen.
Abate them?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty nine, abating taxes for the Hardman slash city of Malvern abandoned property. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Correct.
Yes.
Benton, yes, Mayberry.
Yes. Is this the original you gave me here?
Here's your original right there, it's on the pretty paper.
It's not as good as Larry's.
Not as rare and nice as Larry's.
I know.
Well, I'll just keep those there.
Okay.
Send them all.
Gosh, I'm sure they can't get those apart, there you go.
Well, we can, yeah, this one's all right, I'm like, you get it, it's less than a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it hasn't been in tax sale very long, uh, this one is a private health sa- tax sale, though, so I have to give them back the amount that they have paid us, so I do have to write them a check back for.
Five twenty five.
Five twenty five, yep, and then I need to abate the, the taxes, the current taxes and the penalties from, from that, so. The total abatement is eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And he's gone. I believe he is also deceased, if I remember right, from what I, from.
We've got a motion, Carol, you gonna second that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second to approve resolution thirty, abating taxes on the city of Malvern abandoned, the buyers slash city of Malvern abandoned property. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Correct.
Yes.
Benton, yes, Mayberry.
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm really hard.
Look at all this money we thought we were getting, and we're not.
I know, it's scary.
It is scary.
It is real scary.
Let's get it off the books and be done with it.
That's kind of how I feel about it, I mean, it's money we, we'll never get.
It's gonna keep growing, and it's gonna look better than we have word about it with, and we don't.
Yeah, and here's another one, and this one is, um, this gentleman also is deceased, and this is Glenwood, and it is abandoned property.
Other than that one?
Yeah, um, this one just went on the tax sale, but the city of Glenwood said it, it was not being maintained, it was not, and then, um, and then, uh, I got a call from Jim Hughes, he is purchasing it from the city, and wanted to know what the tat, new taxes and stuff were, and I said, at this point, I don't, I don't know, cause we don't have them. So, so I think what they did was they just decided who was gonna pay what, and going forward at the closing, so.
Get it back on the tax roll.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
I make a motion for, for this one, the Landers and the city of Glenwood.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve resolution thirty one, abating the taxes, tax sale penalties to Lander City of Glenwood, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Correct.
Yes.
Benton, yes, Mayberry.
Yes.
So how has been your exciting week?
Uh, it has been quite exciting, um, we, um, I did do a treasures meeting online the other day, and they had someone from the state speak about the driver's license, and they had intended to promote this prior, this appointment only prior to COVID. COVID just stepped it up, so they do not see ever going back to not having appointments anymore. They said the customers are loving it because they're not having to stand in line, and, um, which is good for them, but, um, we had a customer yesterday, it was after four o'clock, I told them I was sorry, that I didn't think we would get to them. She told me I had rotten customer service, and I said, it's posted twice here, and if you called on the phone, we also told you that on the phone.
City supervisors make me have rotten customer service.
I said, we cannot, we cannot keep doing, we cannot do it after four o'clock, or otherwise, we would never get done.
And what county was this person from?
Potawatomi County, so I told them if they would like to go back up to Potawatomi County and get an appointment and wait till the second week of September, that would be fine. But these are my rules here, and this is the best way that we can handle it, as, us being only the one, very few walk-in stations in the state, so.
So when you were on this conference call, did you stress of, are they put, can they think of having us have extra money coming out of this from other counties?
Amy.
Is it even thought of, is it even talked about?
The treasurer at Jones County had her legislator put in a, a bill that, because she is one of those counties very much like us, that has an overabundance of people that come from a, a different county, and I believe it was, she was asking ten dollars extra a person to do an out-of-county, so it was in legislation, but then when COVID came along, it was one of those that was right in the middle of it, and they never finished. So I don't know if the.
Being talked about, it is, okay.
It was, she had talked to, uh, her legislator, and they had put, put that up for a, a, uh, for discussion, and it was, it was moving right along, and then, uh.
Cause I really think it, it would pass, I really do.
Do you?
I do.
I don't.
You don't?
I do. I don't think the legislators will think it's worthy that we should have more money.
They're not gonna pass something that's gonna cost them a vote.
That's exactly.
All right, Carol, it's just the way it is.
Or the state money.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, where.
If the state was gonna get part of that, it might go through, but.
Well, we get what, seven?
Seven dollars, yes.
Maybe they wanna give us ten.
Well, that has been, uh, proposed for several different times since as long as I've been here, they've, uh, and then it gets shot down, and then they bring it up again.
Close in the polls at eight o'clock instead of nine o'clock, too, we've only had that in for the last thirty years.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You might have two people in the state that.
You know, if they don't wake up till eight forty-five, and, oh, I gotta go vote.
Or, oh, is this voting day? What are we voting for?
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you, that night I went over to Malvern to pick up the, the thing for Laurie, and how many people at two minutes till nine came rushing through that door, and it's like.
It's amazing. Oh, you would not believe all the crabby people we have right now, because all this postal stuff come out there, and, you know, their assumption is that, you know, we don't, they're trying to avoid the, um, mailing ballots, which has absolutely nothing to do with the postal issue, it has to do with, um, their, uh, pay, not the payroll, but their payouts to retirees, what the big issue is with that, it's, you know, through the union contract stuff. But they've automatically put it in there, and I had ladies yesterday who want the ballot right now, I said, well, sorry, but here's the problem with that. We don't even have all the candidates to have their names on the ballot yet, and she doesn't wanna wait, she doesn't trust the, the.
Well, I'd just give her a Republican ballot and say, here, fill it out.
There isn't a, that's, well, they're per.
Ben said for, you want the ballot, here's your ballot.
This person wanted a Republican, and this one wants a Democrat, all one ballot now, we don't, you don't get a choice, well, but we want, no, no, it's all one ballot, everybody's name's on there now. But we don't have them all, yet.
Well, after Thursday, it'll be fine.
When do they come out?
Well, the conventions, I think we get the certification from the state and everything by the end of, I wanna say like twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of August.
Maybe a quote in here for the absentee ballot, though.
Oh, he can fill out a, you can take him.
I saw that.
We can either, number one, mail it to him, or he can come back here, starting October fifth, we'll be voting in pu- in person here.
So he could come back and vote, or.
Starting when, Carol?
October fifth.
But if he requests an absentee, then he can't come in and vote.
Well, okay, if he requests one, and he, and he gets it, he'd have to bring it back in here.
When he votes.
And, yeah.
So turn that in, and then you let him vote, okay, okay.
Yeah, so he's got a couple of op- options, so. Yeah, so he's got a couple of options. So, yeah.
He wants to, so.
That's a good idea. But we've encouraged the college students too, too. When you get it, vote it and get it back and don't mail it on campus because those mails do not go out on a regular. Kids just think they put it in the.
We have trouble with the driver's licenses as well. They don't.
I can mail like that too. I can, I can mail something to Florida and they'll get it tomorrow. But if I mail it to Jim Hughes or down the street in Glenwood, it's, it could take a week.
That was the other thing we tried to work with.
It's not their fault here. It's because it goes there and.
That's the same problems we had when we were doing all the renewals by mail. People were expecting it the next day. We did, we, well, I said, we put, we put it out in this box and then it goes directly to Omaha, then they have to sort it, then it comes back to Glenwood, then they sort it, then it goes out. So.
Well, and the, you know, the postmaster general has said, in our district specifically, even the, the mail, their, the machines, we have enough to take care of it. They're aware, well aware of what we're supposed to have for a record number. So that's not going to be an issue. We did ask our postmaster and the district if we could keep our ballots here locally. I mean, even if they're Malvern people, go to Malvern, to that post office, Glenwood, you know, no, they all, it has to flow through Malvern or through Omaha to get the postmark on there. So we can't even do that. So we've probably already got close to eight hundred requests.
Is that right?
Thank you, Jill. Keep cleaning this up for us.
Yeah, uh, I'm working on another one. It's the old Trajet thing and it's.
Are you kidding me?
It's, it's.
Can you finish that one about December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four?
Well, it's, it's kind of one of those. It's been, it's has two, it's had two tax sales on it, two thousand and sixteen. That investor did not, after they figured out it was a white elephant, he had, he had sent in everything to take deed but then at the last, he never sent me the money to take deed. So then I had to cancel it. Then the next one, he bought it and he didn't even try to take deed or anything. He just waited for the three years to, to cancel it. Now it has another active one on it from two thousand and nineteen. And so he called me the other day and wanted to know how to get ahold of these people because I think he figured out now that nobody else wanted it, then why did.
It costs you a million dollars at least just to get it to sell. At least.
And then to demolish it, it would be a.
Another million.
Yeah, it's gonna, it would be ridiculous, so.
I think we should put the fire station there. That's where countywide D M T should go, D M S.
Um, Malvern is trying to do that. They've got one that is the old elevator over there that, that the state marshals that deemed was not safe and and so they're trying to get ahold of everybody who has, has got a building on leased land and the railroad owns the property underneath it. So it's just kind of a mess. But they said that's what they suggested. It was doing controlled burn for the area volunteer fire departments for a practice uh, situation, so.
I didn't think they were doing those anymore. That's good to know.
You can, but there's so much, so much permitting that has to be involved with it now with asbestos and shingles and tires.
They have to have somebody inspect it to make sure.
It all has to be removed before they can light it. That's.
There's not a whole lot left to burn.
You're right. I mean, Glenwood was gonna do that on a house and, you know, back in, you know, when I was there, we, we actually burned a couple, but as the rules changed right before I left, they, they, we had to strip the shingles, we had to pull the wiring out of it. We had to take some insulation out and by then you've, you've, you've got it, got it to where you can see through it and then it's, it's no more than a campfire after that.
Exactly. So, well, I do have one funny story. I've always coming in here with my people that are so irate with the driver's license, but I, I had a guy call me the other day. He was very upset. He'd been down a few weeks ago to get his driver's license and the lady put a J restriction on his license without even telling him. And he said, and he said, I'm just very upset about that. She said, she didn't even tell me. And I said, I don't understand. What was the J restriction for? And he says, it says I have to have a seat cushion cause my legs are too short to reach the pedals. And I.
Well, I'm not coming here for one. I can tell you that much. I just want a podcasting stand line to heck with you guys.
So I said, okay, and he says, and it's a C D L. And he said, I can't have that on my C D L. So I kept saying to him, you know, what does it actually say? It says I have to have a seat cushion cause my legs are too short to reach the pedals. And so I asked his name and so I pulled him up and I said, yes, you do have a J restriction on it. It says your hazmat is good until one-ten of twenty twenty-four. And I said, you also have an endorsement of an X which is hazmat and a tank. I know that. But the J says my legs are too short to reach the pedals. I said, sir, would you turn your driver's license over and look at the back? What does it say? J, hazmat expires one-ten of twenty twenty-four. And I said, okay. And he goes, well, I guess I shouldn't have Googled a J restriction because that's what it says. Your legs are too short to reach the pedals.
I was gonna say, why do they think that is on the driver's license?
I have to get mine renewed, so I'm gonna ask for one.
So Shelley did Google a J restriction and that is what it says on it.
It does, doesn't it? Seat cushion. A restriction is placed on the.
You know, I'm worried ahead of you. I got a seat cushion in my pickup already.
Well, we know Google is all and powerful. My gosh.
Get the shoe with long heel on it.
This restriction is not limited to a seat cushion or an automatic seat if another device is available.
We've argued and argued.
Good for you, girlfriend.
And a J restriction kept me many things up. Young kids have J restrictions on their uh, inter, on their minor school licenses. You know, so, yeah. There's a lot of things. And then just one other quick thing. Uh, the door to the vault um, was not locked. Was not locking the outside door. Um, Diane had come in one morning and couldn't, couldn't get in the main door, so she pounded and Steve let her in and so she was using her key to get in the back door. And Steve said, why are you using your key? Just go like that. And he pushed it and it opened up. And so I asked Michael on Monday or Friday, it was Friday. And so he took a screwdriver and, and bent it back out. And so now it hits the strike plate. The, I'm sure this is just temporary, but I don't know if it had been this way for two days, two months, six months, a year. But.
The good news, it's fixed.
It bothered me terribly because of the situation of the vault having lots of stuff in there.
Exactly, Jill.
But like I said, I had.
Didn't we, about four years ago, didn't we put a new lock? I remember we were talking about your vault.
Uh, the, the actual safe in there, uh, we have the safe in there. That's what we had talked about earlier. This is just the door itself. And it's one that is, is just a private, you can't open it from the outside. Well, you're not supposed to be able to open it. But when he pushed hard on it, so um, I suggest we don't push on it anymore until we can get it permanently fixed. But it was, it was kind of a scary deal.
What will it take or what?
I think if Michael takes the strike plate off and he puts either a shim behind it or a heavy piece of cardboard or something and then screws it back down just so it brings it out enough that, that it'll, but, yeah, so. But otherwise, we're holding our own. We're getting closer on taxes. We have, get several phone calls a day on, on taxes, wanting to know when they're gonna go out and less people have come in and tried to pay them and we've said we can take their money as futures, but we.
I talked downstairs to Sessler and Agland went down, some went up. We didn't have no increase like they did in Fremont County. That was more of a uh, equalization deal. Seven, eight bucks an acre, you know, that's, that's pretty stiff in one year.
Yes, it is, very much so. Very much so. I've had a few people come in, they better not go up and they're my usual people that they complain if it went down. So, yeah.
Pretty soon they're not gonna go down.
We all have those.
So at Joni and Dave Young's fundraiser, John Dean was there and he was, he had a print off of, you know, just gotta lower the levy tax. You just, you gotta do that, you know, this school's just gonna stop this, 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 like, keep going on. So he made his rounds with his little speech. I said, John, I, I, oh, great, but.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so.
Well, and, and the bad part is, you take like levy taxes and stuff, it, it just takes so much money to do anything. You, you, you can't tax enough to make it work. You cannot. You know, you do, you do a major project and you could, you could spend five, six years paying for it and not do anything. And that's where everybody gets in trouble.
Always millions.
Yeah.
I tell you, we were very lucky with uh, Day Rico, that it did not, I mean, what, we got a little bit of rain and a little bit of wind. But one of the treasures.
Shannon Law is very, very busy.
They were on their way home from Minnesota and they.
Did they get in it?
They just missed it. They were there about one and it went through a little bit earlier than that. But they closed the interstate at Ames, so they had to take backroads around and and Jamie said she, there were like four semis on the road, on the interstate that they saw on their side. But she said, once we got on those backroads and we're going around, she said, I could just watch the color and rain out of my face. But just. So he's hit the ground running. I don't know that she's seen much of him lately.
I bet not.
Probably not.
Elder and Spence's grandson works for the electrical plant over there in Cedar Rapids where they make components. Of course, they was all locked inside when the storm went through and they come out and all the cars, every car was damaged. Most of them total. They thought, my God, the hail. You know, look what the hail did. Well, there was no hail. But the cars were full of sand pebbles and sand. It sucked all the rock, the flat roofs. It sucked all that stuff off and drove it through the cars. I mean, some of the windows were broke. Say passenger was inside, driver's side was outside. He says, oh, he says, grandpa, he says, I could repaint my car. He says, it's pretty well sandblasted. Couple hundred of them. You know, I, uh, some of the things that you see, Atlantic, and they had a lot of wind right in the town. It didn't hurt a lot of stuff, but they'd had construction going on across the street from Linderman's and they'd moved this dirt pile, they'd moved this dirt pile. Well, it just dried out, dried out. They said, we sit there and watch that wind suck that dirt pile up and it deposited, cause the wind came through and then the rain. It deposited downtown Atlantic on the side of buildings and stuff. But he says, he says, he says, it's like one second it's there and the next second we're going, where'd it go? But north up on the interstate.
So are their crops bad up there?
On that, you have to go north of Atlantic, but he says it, it's really flattened. Yeah, they, they've got reports out, guys are trying to chop it and stuff, you know, and they are chopping some and some guys have already destroyed it. You know, they're taking them uh, big straight line cutters and send them in as deep as they'll go and being just laying down, they'll just drive over. But what a, I mean, that corn will rot. It probably won't material enough to, to grow next spring or anything.
Spray next year. Holy bejesus. Sad. And it was seconds.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Trying to clean a few more things.
Twenty-seven counties out of Iowa, yeah.
Do you hear anything from Chris this morning?
No, not yet. Not yet, so.
Thank you, Jill.
You are so welcome.
Next item on the agenda is intermittent accounts payables due to FEMA buyouts.
Okay, so as Tyler kind of discussed earlier, that um, when they have these closings, we're trying to figure out how the best way to do that, we can't exactly get the money all at one chunk um, prior to, but we can kind of get an idea. So they're planning to do closings on Thursdays.
It's Thursday.
No, 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 no. On Thursdays. That's when we, when we start doing them. So we may have to have like another hand, it'd be like a little mini accounts payable on those days so that Clear Title has the money prior to the closings on Thursday. They have to have the money and so that, we had to go through the part with.
Screw and all that.
Yeah, is it a good, you know, are they good checks? And I was like, what? And I said, we do not have the kind that you're worried about. And so anyway, we may need to do another little, but we're, but Tyler still thinks we can do like five a week and then keep, keep it going. So they're getting prioritized.
Okay, are these checks, the checks that you will receive, is it, is they lump sum check or is it checks made out to?
These are checks to the closing company for the, for the closing.
And they will then.
You're gonna have an attorney which will, will be ours, but you'll have Clear Title, you'll have some other costs involved in there. So when they write the check to the surveyor or Clear Title, there's no surveying, I'm just using it as an example, then.
We will write one check and then Clear Title will write one check to you for your mortgage payment, one check for this, one check for that. They're going to have to do all the individual checks. They just get the main.
But they're individualized. Otherwise, we'd have to close them all, put it in an escrow account, figure out whose was what, then disperse it. It's easier to write. If we did five closings in a day, it's easier to send five checks to them.
Right, okay.
And they'll want them that day.
Taxes take, take out of that.
That's, that's all part of it. Yeah, that's all part of it. Yep, yep.
So we just need to get it in our, and it's, that that's acceptable so that we can do those as they come.
Okay, I'll approve the motion for intermittent, intermittent accounts payable.
We've got a motion and a second to approve intermittent accounts payables due to the FEMA buyouts. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aight.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen that are listening. We will uh, see you next week.